I'm Alberto Garcia, I'm the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Atchison is dealing with a family emergency this evening. I know we all send our thoughts to him and his family. And Counselor Pinter is dealing with a medical issue this evening. So we also send our good wishes to her as well. We will start the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. There are flags in both the front of the room and the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Parker, if you would take the role, please.
Atchison, Baker.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCamara.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Pinter. Sites.
Here.
We have five council members present. We will move to a consideration of the minutes of the July 11th meeting. Does anybody have any motion on that? Counselor Baker.
Really, I mean, to thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I move that while the City Council approve the minutes of the July 10th, 2017 meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented in the agenda packet, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. We now have a series of presentations, which include some of our truly favorite things to do, which is the recognition of our employee, our Employee Service Awards. We will start with the 20-year certificate, which will be Counselor DeCamara.
Okay. Can you all hear me? I'm loud enough. Okay, so I'll start with Stephanie Hart. Who do you have here today, Stephanie?
This is Jacob Hart.
Hi, I'm Jacob. How are you?
Good.
Good. Are you excited?
Yeah.
Fun night, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this your son?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna celebrate your mom today. Are you ready?
Yep.
Good. So Stephanie Hart is currently assigned to the Patrol Division in the Police Department and works the late swing shift. Stephanie began her career in law enforcement in 1996 at the Federal Heights Police Department. She was hired in Westminster in 1997, and during her 20 years as a City of Westminster police officer, Stephanie has been involved in several critical incidents and two shootings. She has received a Purple Heart and two Meritorious Service Awards. Stephanie has served in several different assignments throughout her career, including Public Information Officer, Detective, and Field Training Instructor. Your mom's pretty cool. Stephanie has also conducted numerous trainings for fellow officers and city employees, including tourniquet use and application, violence in the workplace, and other topics. She has also been a firearms instructor for 10 years. Stephanie has been the coordinator for the Scott Wagner Memorial Softball Tournament for the past two years. Stephanie enjoys playing soccer and coaches Westminster youth soccer. She has a seven-year-old son, who she enjoys spending time with exploring the outdoors. So please help me in congratulating Stephanie. Thank you, Saint Mary. Thank you. Okay, and then I want to call Penny Ringsby. So who do you have here with you today?
My son Eric.
Nice to meet you, Eric. You have a crowd. Nice to meet you.
I like your camera. Oh, I don't want to get teased a lot.
Okay, so I have the honor, again, of awarding Penny. Penny was hired in 1997 as a police records technician in the Police Department. During Penny's career, she has not only performed her normal duties as a police records technician, but has also helped test and train her peers in the ILEAD's Records Management System, LaserFISH, and the future upgraded record system, WebRMS. Penny has training and certification on CCIC, Master Certification CCRN, Cora and NIBRS, and the fingerprint machine used to fingerprint citizens. From October 2004 to January 2006, Penny was assigned to perform the NIBRS duties. NIBRS reports all of the City of Westminster's crime to the Colorado Bureau of Investigations and to the Federal Bureau of Investigations. She made sure the reports were accurate and coded correctly. Westminster was number one in 2005 on reporting data in a timely manner to the state. And I think we know why. From that important event, Penny received an email from the state to her supervisor stating that Westminster submissions were processed with no errors detected. Penny has received Many Teams in Action awards for her participation on teams such as the IntegraF project team and LaserFISH project, and the team for the fatal go-kart accident involving two young boys. Penny enjoys spending quality time with her family. She has been married for 24 years. Well, that's pretty impressive. And I've been married for five. It's impressive. And has a daughter and two sons. One child is currently away at college in Kent, Ohio, and another just graduated from high school and will be attending the Colorado School of Mines this August. Pretty impressive. Penny enjoys watching her son play baseball, exercising, reading, and playing with her baby. Okay. Ruffus. Okay. Okay, please join me in thanking Penny for all the great work she does. Do you all want to come to the side so we can go over the shot? And do you want here? If you want, I can have someone take a picture with your camera. We should take a picture of the camera itself. Here, come on. Close together. I'll take two with this camera and then two. Thank you so much, Jody.
The flash will come out. No, you need to... Just press the front with the flash on, the finger on the red.
Oh, here? Yeah. Thank you. Two, three. Yes, okay. Thank you so much, Jody. Thank you very much for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We could have Jackie Bowers come up, please. Jackie, somebody told me that you love to be embarrassed. So we're gonna make this as sappy as possible.
Oh, great.
Do you want to introduce?
My husband, Devin.
Wonderful. This is a big, this is big. This is big for me, too, because this is the 25-year award, which will soon find comes as a little extra incentive. It's the first time I get to give it out. But let me read a little bit about what's here, then we'll further give effusive praise to you. Jackie Bowers began as a seasonal employee for the Public Works and Utilities Department in 1992 while she was a junior in high school. She progressed in her career with the department and ultimately promoted to Department Administrative Secretary, working directly with the Public Works and Utilities Director. Jackie later moved to the City Manager's Office as the Executive Assistant to the Deputy City Manager, working with Deputy Jody Andrews. Combined with her tremendous skills, she is known throughout the organization for her helpful nature and friendly attitude, as well as her alter ego, which is known as the Jackie of all trades, where she showcases important city issues such as safety, as well as highlighting the many roles filled by employees throughout the organization. When Jackie isn't busy making the city sparkle, she enjoys fixing every little ailment with her magical oils, masterfully accomplishing home improvements, and spending time with her family. Jackie and Devin, of Parks Foreman, have been married for 14 years. Together, they have two wonderful furry four-legged kids, Stella, a little, a yellow lamb, and Holly, a cat. Now, it's City Council, we get the privilege of seeing Jackie a lot. And I think that everybody up here will attest to the fact that she has an incredibly warm, welcoming personality, and you're not gonna find somebody here who is more welcoming at the City of Westminster. You walk in there, she's very likely to meet you with a smile. It doesn't matter what's going on throughout the day, she is there, ready to help you, and she is friendly, kind, and courteous, and it's always a pleasure to interact with her, and that's why it is so, so much an honor to be able to give you this award. And it's not just City Council that she has an impact on, it's her fellow coworkers. And I think we have some people here who may have some shirts that demonstrate their, how much they care about Jackie. If people would stand up that are wearing those shirts and model them for the crowd. In my four years on council, this is the first time anybody's brought their own attire, so that is impressive.
It's my fan club.
And Counselor DeCamara, I believe it was Counselor DeCamara, did ask earlier if we could make her award in pink, but they said no.
I'm trying, Jack. Thank you.
But in addition to a plaque recognizing our service, one of the other things City Westminster does is for 25 years of service, you get awarded a check for $100 for each year you've been here. I am proud to give you a $2,500 check, which anybody who goes to work that you knows, this is such a small, small token, to say thank you for the incredible work you do for the City of Westminster.
Well, should I start in kindergarten?
Yes. I'd like to thank my fan club for making it out tonight. Doing a speech. One, two, three.
When you $500 buys a lot of those shirts.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to have, really, Mike, really, Normandin, join me in the front with the people he brought. I have the pleasure of reading, well, the recognition for Mike. Michael, really, Michael Normandin was hired as the city's traffic technician in, really, July of 1977 in, I mean, the Community Development Department. And after several years of really dedicated service, he was really promoted to the Transportation Engineer in 1983. During his really tenure with the City of Westminster, Mike has been instrumental in of the procuring federal funding for many transportation-related projects. Well, these projects include, I mean, pedestrian underpasses, trail projects, bridge of the replacements, railroad crossing, flashers, and gate installations, road widening, intersection improvements, and new traffic signals installation and enhancements. Mike, Mike, Mike was involved in the implementation of the cities, of the computerized traffic signal system. He was also a key member and project manager in the development of all the city's comprehensive roadway plan adopted in 2008, and the 2030 Westminster Bicycle Master Plan adopted in 2011. In his, in his really free time, Mike enjoys spending really quality time with his family and friends and watching the local sports team. We have a nice plaque and a pin, and our really thanks for all the service you've given us. You want the brochure?
Sure.
There you go.
Can I have Chief Carlson join me up front? So I have the honor of recognizing the Westminster Public Safety Center as Colorado's 2017 National Emergency Number Association and Association of Public Safety Communications Center Officials Communication Center of the Year. And in so doing, I'll ask Chief Carlson to invite any additional members of his staff to join us.
Yeah, our communications staff is here. I think it's half the audience. We'll be rooting for them as they come up. We have several line workers, and we have several supervisors, and Russ Bowers is our manager for our communication section, so I'm gonna let him introduce his staff before we go any further. Got you all written down here, so I won't forget anybody. We've got Molly, Quincy, Sandy, Sarah, Ashley, Marina, Karen, Missy, Emily, and myself. It's not an easy feat to get all of them out of the dispatch center at one time, but we've managed to get them here.
Well, this is an incredible group of staff members that do great work for us every day. I have a short summary statement to make, but then I would love to turn it over to you to talk more about, really, the significance of this work for our city and what this award means, and how it's such a great recognition of the work that you do. So annually, the National Emergency Number Association and Association of Public Safety Communications Center officials recognize a Colorado Communication Center as the Center of the Year. On March 7th, 2017, the Westminster Public Safety Center was nominated for this honor. On April 18th, 2017, representatives of the Westminster Public Safety Communications Center received the award for Colorado's NENA APOC O Communication Center of the Year. That's pretty awesome.
Well, and this really stems from a very tragic event in our organization, and I'll let Karen and Russ kind of fill in those details, but I couldn't be more proud of this group. This is incredibly difficult job. It's tough to keep people here to do this job. It's so hard, and I recognize that. We're working very hard to fill those holes, but we have some of the best trained, quality professional people running the center that provide EMS, police, and fire dispatching in the entire state. So this is a fabulous group of people, and I'm very proud of them. As far as the details of Karen or Russ, I'll let you kind of fill that in.
Well, on February 18th, we had one of the most tragic events a team can have within a team, and one of our members committed suicide. Our group held together like no group I've ever seen. I've been managing mission-critical crews for over 25 years, and while they were grieving and obviously hurting, they just continued with their jobs. Nobody fell down on the job, nobody called in sick, everybody just kept hammering away. And it was the most impressive thing I think I've seen in my career, how they stuck together and leaned on each other. Just quite a phenomenal feat. This is the crew that, they're always volunteering to help other 911 centers when they have a death, and they go in and staff those centers so people can attend those. Not only is it personally touching, but it's professionally gratifying to see such a cohesive team maintain their professionalism and understood the mission and just never let go.
Well, thank you.
I think that'll conclude the presentation portion of the council agenda, and again, thank you very much to our amazing team that works in the Communications Department, and a special thank you to all of our employees who are honored tonight. I think that you see how long people stay here and how much they love the City of Westminster is a testament to the culture that's been built here by our city manager, by his staff, by our Human Resources Department, so I just want to say thank you to everybody involved with that. We'll now turn to a report, oh, excuse me. We will now turn to Citizen Communication. This is a, this is a period for you to come and comment on anything on your mind other than an item that's up for public hearing this evening. We don't have any items on the agenda for public hearing, so it's wide open. You'll have, limited to five minutes, if you could just state your name and address. The little yellow light will come on at one minute, then the red light will come on at zero. We have a couple people signed up that will start with this list. The first one is Ms. Linda Grabiel.
Hello, my name is Linda Grabiel, and I reside at 6504 West 95th Place in Westminster. City Council and Mayor Pro Tem and staff, I've come to just give you happy news. Okay, I like giving happy news. I like to come, I'm the president of the Westminster Historical Society, and we like to just present a couple of times a year our appreciation to the city and all it does for us. Now, recently, we had our 27th Annual Vintage Baseball Game, and during this game, we had women protesters that were out there speaking, demanding women's suffrage, and I know this is an election year, so you can be thankful that there were women like us a long time ago that voted for this before we could vote, because otherwise, we couldn't vote and you wouldn't be here, some of you. Now, as to the flyer that you're...
And then we do have a monthly, every third Saturday afternoon at 1:00, we have the Westminster Public Library come out and give a presentation of colorful Colorado cinema, and we have learned a lot. Well, speaking of the library, finally, I want to thank council for the library master plan that you've worked out. It's very well thought out, and we appreciate it. Thank you again.
Mr. Grady Newis, I apologize if that last name is incorrect. Newis, I've been told, Newis.
My name is Grady Newis. I live at 11272 West 102nd Drive. First off, I just want to thank city council for their time and those of you from the community that have showed up this evening. Also, I'd like to give a congrats for this past week's phone town hall meeting. I know my neighbors appreciate not having to leave their couch to be filled with some of the projects the city is working on. I would also like to thank Mr. Garcia personally for asking what I, for asking what I thought were the best unresolved follow-up questions two weeks ago to Mr. Gruder and Mr. Stradelmeier regarding the Pressure Zone 3 expansion project, or as some know it as, the Gregory Hill Pump Station and Tank Situation. Mr. Garcia asked some questions that I personally had, and I think that the digging he was doing found new underlying issues that were hidden in the cracks of the presentation, like the fact that the project location had been known to the engineering team for over 12 months, yet relayed to the community just a few weeks ago. Also, thanks to Mr. Baker for his question on their emergency backup response to what if something were to happen to these new tanks, which caught the project engineers completely off guard with no solutions that night. As I drove home from the city council meeting two weeks ago, I thought to myself, wow, there really was no good answer on why these new water-holding tanks are potentially being built. The best reason that was established to the room was that the old tanks were 50 years old, and in the long run, the city should bite the bullet and build new ones instead of repairing the old ones, which does make financial long-run success. Just over a week later, here I am browsing Facebook when a sponsored ad from the City of Westminster Emergency Management comes over my newsfeed. It states, "Colorado has warmed by 2 degrees in the past 30 years and 2.5 in the past 50. Spring is coming 2 to 4 weeks earlier than it used to, which increases our water usage." Wait, what did I just read? "Spring is now coming 2 to 4 weeks earlier than it used to, which increases our water usage." I'd hate to be that guy, but I find it awfully convenient that the city has no solid reason to be building 2, 3 million gallon water tanks, and then a week later, they are trying to tell me that because of a 2-degree increase in temperature statewide, we will be increasing our water usage. I'll put the tin hat on here and go on a limb, but what are the chances that Westminster is going to use global warming as their new reason to spend $15 to $30 million on larger water reservoirs? I mean, after all, the city did spend taxpayer money paying for a Facebook ad telling me global warming is causing increased water usage. So is it really that far-fetched? By the way, I'm sure that I'm the only one who noticed, or cares really, the fact that 100% of the meeting on July 10th was uploaded as normal to the city's website except for one piece, which bothers me. That one piece being every single public comment was excluded from being uploaded on the city's website. The clip labeled "City Council Meeting Part 1" has two minutes of the mayor introducing the public speaking segment, and then it cuts right off before the first public speaker. Before the city starts using the excuse that there was technical difficulty in recording of the public comments, let me remind the council and everybody here today that 100% of the public comment from July 10th can be found on the city's YouTube channel. So it's important enough for YouTube, but not important enough to include on the city's website where people actually look. I'd hate to think the city was in some way selectively moderating who and what the city opinions are worth to upload. Was it because a few people spoke out against supporting the WEDA? Was it because a few people spoke out about the lack of transparency about the Gregory Hill Project? Was it because I called out the Colorado Immigration Rights Coalition for potentially influencing this fall's county elections? Technical difficulties, accidental oversight, purposely cut out, honestly, I don't care. I do appreciate your time. It might not seem like it, but I do. I just continuously see major transparency issues that drive a wedge, and I don't think I'm the only one who feels this way. At the end of the day, I do wish everybody the best in this fall's elections and a safe rest of the summer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Calaviti. Yeah, Calaviti. 3731 West 91st Place here in Westminster. And my comments are relating to, I've heard some talk about the affordable housing, and there's a lot of building going on in Westminster and Colorado in general. But I'm also aware that, for instance, I have some handouts to give to you a little bit later after I speak. But, you know, places, there are places that are doing some progressive work as far as requiring building standards to be met before construction takes place. Here's, new homes will now require solar panels in South Miami, a first in Florida. We should start in, we have this municipal building that was retrofitted with the geothermal to help save energy and to, you know, combat our share of climate warming. But there are other ways we should deal with architecture. I mean, there's the nice model in the hallway, but I'm not sure that there's any thought being given to, you know, requiring solar and some of the energy-saving and climate-saving materials and design that would really make Westminster, you know, a desirable and prominent place to live and a progressive model for other parts of the country. So I would just propose that we, here in Westminster, start talking about design guidelines in construction that actually require some of these solar panels and geothermal as ways of both fighting global warming and cost savings in the long run for people who are using the structures. I also have some pictures here of, in parks in Serbia, you know, for instance, they're using solar as a way for, it's structural, sculptural, very sculptural designs, not just solar panels out in an array, but very sculpturally-artistically designed things that they're using for just, you know, recharging their phones and that kind of thing in a park setting. So some of these things, I think, should be starting to be incorporated within the design guidelines for Westminster so that we stay current and above, ahead of the curve on our ways of artistically expressing architecture as well as environmentally sound protections of providing architecture.
My name's Christian Ogle. I live at 5305 West 100th Court. I just wanted to thank the city for including its planned efforts to encourage energy and resource conservation in the City of Westminster, especially Councilor Seitz's efforts to highlight and strengthen our commitment to those efforts. I was reading about decisions that the city took back in the 1990s to encourage water resource conservation in the city, and since that time, we've reduced per capita consumption by over 20%, saving the city potentially over $500 million in new infrastructure and water resource, wastewater management. So the cheapest energy out there is the energy we don't have to use, don't have to buy. So I think enshrining this in our strategic plan is very important and helpful. Thank you.
That is all the people who signed up for Citizen Communication. Is there anybody else who wishes to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will close the Citizen Communication portion and move to the report of city officials. Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to recognize the employees who were noted tonight, and thank you for recognizing them at this meeting. We're very proud to work with those folks.
Thank you. We'll now move on to city council comments. Mr. DeCamper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I also want to take time to thank our city employees, especially for all the work related to the Latino Festival that took place on Saturday. If you were there, you'll know that, you know, it was bigger and better than it was last year. The feedback that we received from community members was just, everybody was just excited. And also, we had many elected officials attend the event, who even spoke about, wow, we didn't expect this to be as great as it is. And I especially wanted to thank, you know, Ryan, head greatness? Ryan, I'm trying. You know, you don't often see a manager actually walking around a festival with a bag of trash, just picking up trash from the festival, you know? That talks about kind of the commitment of our city employees, you know? That's really just something you don't see. And he saw there was some trash, and then suddenly I see him walking around, picking it up. So thank you. Thank you for the commitment. Thank you for Jason and just everybody in your team, and also to our police department. I think one of the most popular booths was the police department area. Everybody wanted a picture. And, you know, Karen and everybody there are just, you know, and they were not just standing there, they were just talking to people and engaging them, which is really what we're about. It's really about, you know, increasing trust with our residents, making sure people feel comfortable, you know, talking to everybody in our city. So thank you all. It just felt, I felt very proud to be representing the city and just for the quality of work that we do. So thank you.
Councilor Seitz.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Welcome, everyone, tonight. I hope it's going to be a pretty quick evening for us all, but I wanted to first talk about some of the fun things that we did in Westminster this last week. And of course, the Latino Festival is top on that list. It was an excellent event. It was well-attended, well-run, and it just really showed that that had been a somewhat unmet need within our community. Politicians, elected officials, and candidates from all around came to this event because this is a valuable community, and quite frankly, maybe not enough opportunities to engage as local government. So I was really proud of Westminster for filling that role. I also want to thank our employees that were honored or recognized tonight. Specifically, want to thank the employees of the Public Safety Center. That was a really moving story, talking about the teamwork and commitment and professionalism and camaraderie of that group. I do want to point out that we are currently in recruitment, so if you want to join a group of highly skilled and highly compassionate people, look at our website. Finally, I want to note that we are going to adopt our strategic plan tonight. This is a document, as a council, as a staff, and as a community, we all work together, collaborate together to build. And we are making one amendment to that. We are going to strengthen the prioritization on energy efficiency. Sorry, I'll read it out loud to you. "To use energy efficiently, conserve resources, and educate citizens as to ways they can also support sustainable natural resource behaviors." There was a comment that was made tonight that I think really rings to why this is such an important government function. The cheapest energy is energy that isn't used, and so by promoting energy efficiency, we're being strong fiscal stewards. And so I'm excited that we're going to take a leadership role along with other local communities on that area, so, in that area. So thank you so much.
Councilor Byrd.
Hi there. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And Ms. Calaviti, I wanted to come back and tell you something that I think will make you happy, especially with respect to the new downtown center that we're redeveloping. Back in May, council had a presentation by staff that we're looking into something called a district energy approach, where thermal energy is being shared between commercial buildings. So we have a whole new development where the slate has basically been wiped clean, and we've got this opportunity with new infrastructure being constructed to put something in that leverages thermal energy and can help us conserve. And some of the other benefits, I just went back and was looking at this, is increased reliability of thermal energy systems relating in greater productivity and less downtime, increased energy efficiency of every facility and lead certification, reduced greenhouse gas emissions through renewable and alternative energy technologies and utilization wherever they can throughout the district, and attracting capital investment. Well, this would be one of the goals, that we would be attracting more capital investment to the site, because we would be being good stewards of the environment and taxpayers' dollars. So we are looking into this, staff is, and trying to plan and be more environmentally responsible even with respect to the construction of our new downtown. So thank you for bringing that up. I actually haven't had an opportunity to brag about that, and it's actually a pretty exciting piece of investigation that the city is looking into that I think would be a nice way to demonstrate opportunities, maybe even to other developers, as they look to expand and develop in the area. So, thanks.
Let's want to take an opportunity to highlight two community events that occurred from our fir, they were participation from our first responders. And one was this past weekend, there is a camp called the, I need to read my reading glasses, it's a camp called the Hal Bruno Fallen Firefighters Camp for Kids. This is a camp, it's a three-day camp for children and teens that have experienced the loss of a firefighter parent in the line of duty. And our City of Westminster Fire Department hosted a group as part of this camp, participated, interacted, had all sorts of activities with them, and I know that that was something that they were very proud to participate in, and I'm just glad that our fire department could be a part of that, that very powerful event. And then the second, this is something that happened a couple of weeks ago, which was a softball tournament that was held here in Westminster, Scott Wagner Memorial Softball Tournament, which is a softball tournament to honor one of our officers who passed away after battle with cancer. This is the second year that this event has happened, and this is truly an organic event. This is a group of police department personnel who said, "We want to do something to honor Officer Wagner. We want to do something to help his family." They had the tournament last year. I was out there last year, and this year, Mayor Atchison and I went, and it is truly, truly moving to see what happened. Last year, the tournament was about providing some support for his family. This year, the event has expanded to provide scholarships. Scholarships to children of Westminster Police Officers and other Westminster employees. I believe that there were three scholarships, if I'm correct, that were given out at that, at that, at the event, very moving ceremony. We had police departments from all over the metro region that participated, and it was, it was truly powerful to see so many, see the police office community come together to honor Officer Wagner and to help his family and to help continue his legacy and his mission. And I just want to say a very special thank you to the members of our staff who were so integral in planning and organizing that event, because like I said, this was their idea, this is something they worked hard on their own time to build up, and now it is, you saw so many teams out there, so many, so much energy, it was really a powerful event to see, so I just wanted to say thank you.
And with that, we will, oh, we'll go back to Councilor DeCamper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say, completely forgot to mention that the City of Westminster has been featured in this summer's issue of Tuggal Magazine, which apparently it's a very big and respected magazine that talks about technology, and they've been featured because of the work that they continue to do, well, that we continue, but I'm looking at all the folks from our IT department, to make sure that we continue to be innovative. So I just want to thank you all. I know David's not here today, but I said this when I got back from I know David's not here today, but I said this when I got back from Harvard, it was completely impressive when in one of my classes, the one that talked about technology, our city was featured. And so thank you for everything that you're doing, for always kind of being innovative in everything that we do. So thank you, guys.
Great. We'll now close the council comment period and move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a series of routine items that will be voted on as one motion. We discussed this in our pre-meeting, and there was no indication that any item will be removed. So if I could get a motion, Mr. Baker.
I mean, to thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move that while the city council adopt, while the consent agenda, items 8A through
We have a motion and a second. Oh, Councilor Baker.
I would like to make a comment on this because on one of the things C, it talks about a grant that we are really pursuing. And part of this grant, I mean, the vast majority of the grant has to do with improving our trails. But part of the grant has to do with wayfinding signs, and we had a presentation on those wayfinding signs. And at the time, I thought they were extraordinarily expensive. And I really hope that we can do a more thrifty, practical approach to wayfinding signs at a better price. But I will be voting for this.
This is a vote with your buttons? If you would please indicate your preference. We have a 5-0 vote. The consent agenda is approved. We will now move on to public hearings and other new business. We are at Agenda Item 10A. Councilor Sykes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to adopt Resolution Number 17 and the 2017 Strategic Plan as corrected and revised for the City of Westminster. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Councilor Sykes.
I again just want to thank my colleagues for taking a leadership role on energy efficiency and natural resource conservation. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, this is a roll call vote.
Baker. Byrd. Yes. DeCambre. Yes. Garcia. Yes. Sykes. Yes.
The motion passes 4-1. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 10B. Councilor Byrd.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 18 authorizing the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department to pursue a grant from the Great Outdoors Colorado Inspire Grant Program during the 2017 cycle in the amount of $3 million to implement the Westy Power, Westy Poder, which supports nature programming, career opportunities, and park amenities to the England Park Corridor.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comment? Councilor Sykes.
Sorry to be chatty. I just want to say, this is a very complimentary effort to all that we're investing in southwest Westminster and the historic part of our city adjacent to our park at our transit-oriented development and Westminster Station. So I'm excited to vote yes.
I'd just like to point out that Councilor DeCambre has informed us that she has a conflict related to this agenda item, and after consultation with the city attorney's office, has been excused from voting on this matter. This is a roll call vote.
Oh, Councilor Byrd.
So I just wanted to also call out a couple of the really incredible features of what, if we are awarded this grant, what this can do for our community. First, though, thank you to staff for being aware and staying on top of these things and making sure that Westminster is in the game because this grant is incredible. If we are able to get this, much of this funding will give us after and during school nature programming for 160 underserved youth per year for three years. It'll provide a summer camp for 60 underserved youth for three years also, access to a lending library with outdoor gear so families can explore nature, create mentorships and volunteer opportunities to engage underserved teens in career pathways, and create new part-time positions and internships for young adults and youth in southwest Westminster and outdoor careers. This is just creating such great opportunity for so many people who greatly deserve the investment. It's just great for our city. So thank you for doing this and for making this happen for so many people.
Okay, I don't believe there's any other comments. The clerk could call the roll.
Byrd. Yes. DeCambre abstains. Garcia. Yes. Sykes. Yes. Baker. Yes.
The motion passes with four yes and one abstain. Can now move to the next agenda item, which is Councilor's Bill Number 29. Councilor Byrd.
I move to pass Councilor's Bill Number 29 on first reading amending the Westminster Municipal Code 14-1 concerning the Police Pension Plan Ordinance related to the partial affiliation with the Fire and Police Pension Association Defined Benefit System.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
DeCambre. Yes. Garcia. Yes. Sykes. Baker. Yes. Byrd. Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Councilor Byrd, if you'd like to do the second part of that?
I move to pass Councilor's Bill Number 30 on first reading amending the Westminster Municipal Code 14-2 concerning the General Employee Pension Plan Ordinance related to the merging of the Police Pension Plan with the General Employee Pension Plan to be retitled to the Employee 401A Defined Contribution Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? Councilor Sykes.
Oh, sorry.
This is a roll call vote.
Garcia. Yes. Sykes. Baker. Yes. Byrd. Yes. DeCambre. Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. We will now move to Agenda Item 11, which is Old Business and Passage of Ordinance on Second Reading. Do we have a motion for Councilor's Bill Number 27? Councilor DeCambre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move to pass Councilor Bill Number 27 on second reading approving a comprehensive plan amendment for 3.75 acres located at the southeast corner of Sheridan Boulevard and West 96th Avenue from mixed use to R18 residential. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-4, 11, sorry, 11-4-16 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is, is there any comments on this agenda item? This is also a roll call vote.
Yes. Baker. No. Byrd. Yes. DeCambre. Yes. Garcia. Yes.
Motion passes 4-1. Councilor Sykes.
I move to pass Councilor's Bill Number 28 on second reading authorizing the city manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with Alamo Westminster LLC. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comments on this? Councilor Baker.
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I cannot express my deep sadness over this item. I think good people are making a terribly foolish mistake. I think in some regards, it might even be worse than that, and that's why my sadness over what we're doing here could not be greater. I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilor DeCambre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I want to thank our staff for all the work that you've put into making this agreement happen. Not only is this going to help to continue to build community, it's going to be a place where people can go and, and, you know, spend a different kind of Friday or Saturday night. And it's also going to employ 120 workers, which is more jobs that we're bringing to the city. So thank you very much.
Councilor Byrd.
Yes, I'd also like to thank staff. I know that this agreement is the result of many months of negotiation and hard work. And something I think that people don't think about very often is that many times the city does have a role in being a strategic partner with the private sector to make sure that we can bring in the kinds of development that best serve our community. This is leverage that we have where we can, we can bring in those partners who want to give our citizens good-paying jobs and offer amenities that frankly, our citizens have been asking for for years. And also, our citizens have been asking for redevelopment of this area that used to be our old Westminster Mall, an area that has laid barren for quite some time. And so at any rate, I'm proud to support this. I know it's a smart partnership, it's doing good work for our city, and will help generate lots of sales tax dollars later on the road and improve quality of life for our citizens. So I will be voting yes.
Councilor Sykes.
Thanks, I'll be brief. Buildings last a really long time, and so much of what's going to make our downtown successful is the aesthetic, is going to be the feel and the sense of place. And so I think that this is a very worthwhile investment to ensure that the architectural product meets our guidelines. And so while I agree with Councilor Baker, we really need to be cautious about what we're incentivizing, and we have to be cautious with the taxpayers' dollars. This project, first off, we're going to get a better product, but we're actually rebating. And so this is money that would not be coming in but for the project and allows us to get a better quality project that will last for really decades and decades. So I don't think any of us have not experienced an ugly building where you can't believe why did they let that be built right here, and then those beautiful buildings that endure time. And I'm happy we're going to have a product that our staff has really ensured will endure. And actually, one of the individuals responsible for that is in the audience tonight, Sarah Normella, so I'd actually like to thank you specifically for your work on this.
Councilor Baker.
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And thank you, colleagues, for an actual discussion of this thing. I think architectural beauty is important everywhere in the city. I think that's what all of us want everywhere in the city, and to give it only to chosen few, I think, is grossly unfair, quite unfair. And the matter that it's rebates, I'm sure every business in the city would be happy to keep 100% of their sales tax collection for three years to make a better building. I think every business in the city would be more than willing to do that. I think they'd jump at it, but I don't think we're going to give them that. I think this is a special arrangement, and I've already told the reasons why I think it's being made. Thank you.
Councilor Sykes.
I realize it's risky to enter into a back and forth, but the last thing I will say is this is in the taxpayers' interests. We are the major landholder for the rest of the site, and so we are making sure that we will get the best price on the rest of our product as we sell it.
Councilor DeCambre.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, you know, Councilor Baker, I just want to mention, you talked about thankful for having a discussion, and I just want to say, we have a discussion every time with our staff. Sometimes it's hours into the 1, 2:00 in the morning, every time we review any of these deals. We're very intentional in everything that we're doing, not only in the new downtown but throughout the city. So just to insinuate that there's never been a discussion, I don't think it's a fair assessment. And also, I'm just curious, you've voted no in every project related to the downtown and many projects in the city, so what will it take to actually vote yes on something that our residents keep asking us to do?
Councilor Baker.
I wasn't going to do a back and forth either, but if you will look on the Thrash deal, how was my vote? Do you remember? Oh, does, well, no. Thank you very.
Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Baker. Byrd. Yes. DeCambre. Yes. Garcia. Yes. Sykes. Yes.
Motion passes, passes 4 to 1. That concludes the business of the Westminster City Council. We do have an executive session scheduled after this. If, council, I will see you in five, five minutes or so.
That's, I don't think it's hatred. It's bad memory. I apologize.